Excuse me. Good morning and welcome to the November 9th, 2023 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. This meeting will now come to order. Dr. Kyle Cersei, pastor of Fresh Anointing House of Worship here in Montgomery, will now lead the invocation. Sir?
Our Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us together. Thank you for this board that's making decisions and policies that affects the mind, the soul, of children all across this state. God, the challenges are increasing, so let your wisdom increase. Let your grace increase. Let your blessings increase. God, we ask for favor. We ask that your heart will be downloaded to each and every individual board member. We bring teachers all across this state before you. We bring all those who work in the school system. Father, would you shine on it? Would you bless it? Would you increase the educational prowess in this state? We ask it in Jesus' name. We thank you for hearing and answering it. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, this Saturday is Veterans Day, a solemn day in which we honor the veterans in our country who served in our armed forces to preserve the rights and the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans. Today, we're going to modify our meeting schedule slightly as a group of ROTC cadets from Prattville High School, Otoga County Schools joins us to present the colors, after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag and resume our regular business. I'd like to call on a veteran, the U.S. Army, and currently the National Treasurer of the Vietnam Veterans of America, Dr. Wayne Reynolds, to call these young cadets forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Reynolds?
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure that we know you recognize veterans and that this board and this governor recognize veterans. One thing all veterans have in common is the oath of enlistment, which we say when we join the military. And that oath of enlistment never has an ending point. I said mine the first time, August 2, 1966, and it still is in effect. And it's on the screen, and I will read it. All of us who've ever joined the military have said this oath, and we're always abiding by it. "I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I will obey the orders of the President of the United States and the orders of the officers appointed over me according to the regulations and the Uniform Code of Military Justice. So help me God." So if you'll stand, we'll post colors and have the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in two threes for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At ease, please be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. We'll now resume with our normal business. Mrs. Thorington, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Present.
Dr. Chestnut?
Present.
Governor Ivey? Mrs. Manning?
Present.
Mrs. McRae?
Present.
Dr. Reynolds?
Present.
Dr. Richardson? Mrs. West?
Here.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mrs. Thorington. We will now consider a motion to approve the agenda of the November 9th, 2023 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Thorington. We will now consider a motion to approve the minutes from the October 12th, 2023 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education.
Move approval.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Thorington. Mrs. Thorington, is anyone signed up to speak today?
We have one public speaker.
Thank you so much. I'm now going to turn this portion of our business over to our General Counsel, Mr. Jason Swan.
Good morning, board members. I want to thank everybody for being here. Obviously, it's a great meeting day today in honor of Veterans Day. This, again, the public speaking portion is an important function of our board, an important function for this department and for the citizens of Alabama. Do want to lay out some ground rules just a little bit as per our administrative code. In that regard, please introduce yourself and what topic you're necessarily speaking on, and be advised that there are no questions to the board, and also make sure that you maintain and observe decorum. And only matters that are on the current agenda are in the scope of the comments for today. Lastly, there'll be two minutes to speak, and I'll try to give you a 30-second notice. And I believe we have two minutes up on the clock. And Ms. Thorington, what was the name of the speaker that had?
Isabel Welch.
Sorry?
Isabel Welch.
Is Ms. Welch here today? And then when you start speaking, the clock will start running, so.
Good morning. My name is Isabel Welch, and I am here to speak about Agenda Item L regarding the Alternative Teacher Preparation Organizations. So I represent American Board for Certification of Teacher Excellence, which is one of these programs that is looking forward to being able to participate in Alabama. So American Board was founded by the United States Department of Education under the George W. Bush administration in 2001. We've been a national leader in alternative teacher certification for more than 20 years. We currently operate in 14 states, and we've certified more than 16,000 teachers nationwide. American Board's program works by taking people who already have a bachelor's degree in something other than education and allowing them to become fully licensed teachers. So typically, people who use our program are around 39 years old. It's the average age. They are career changers, so your accountant who's looking to teach math. They are military veterans and spouses. We're a partner with DOD Skillbridge, which is a military transition program. They are stay-at-home parents who are looking to re-enter the workforce, and they are professionals and substitutes who are already working in your schools and looking to become fully licensed. So we are here today to support the proposed rules and say that we're really thankful and appreciative of all the hard work that you guys have gone through to develop them. We do have one concern about the lack of specifics in Section 5B of the draft rule regarding the review of ATPO assessments. Just because it doesn't have the specific things regarding timeline and how exactly that review would be carried out, we would like to propose that an independent third-party review be accepted as evidence of alignment for this part of the rule. So we are really thankful to be here today, and we look forward to our partnership with Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I believe that's the only speaker we have for today, so that concludes the public speaking portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Mrs. Thorington, is there any unfinished business?
There's no unfinished business.
We'll now consider a reso-- I'm sorry, we'll move on to new business. Item G2. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Creekview Elementary School and Alabaster City School System and State Board District 3 as a 2023 Blue Ribbon School. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
I proudly make the motion for approval.
We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Dr. Mackey, would you like to talk about Blue Ribbon Schools?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the opportunity. So we have five National Blue Ribbon Schools. I won't speak about all of them, but just in general, so that folks in the room know there are a couple of ways that schools can be nominated to be National Blue Ribbon Schools. And it's for two things. One is just pure high-skill academic achievement. But the other one is high academic achievement in light of difficult circumstances or the population that's in the school. And the schools that we have today are all high flyers, and they're all high flyers in recognition of the population of students that they have. Creekview is the first of them. But all of these schools are also invited to go to Washington, D.C. They'll be making that trip soon to receive their actual award in Washington. We wanted to recognize them here, though, and we appreciate them coming. We, at the end of the program, Ms. West, we'd like to get all of them down, and then we will do individual photos with the school representatives who are here, as well as their board members. And I don't know, as we go through, if you'd like to recognize. I know we have folks here from Alabaster, and I think all the schools do have representatives here today, so.
If I may, if I may recognize them and ask them to stand. This is for, in recognition of Creekview Elementary School and Alabaster City School System. Again, I'm proudly making the motion for approval, and if they're--
They do, yes. Good to be down here.
Love for everyone to see all the hard work that--
In addition, we've got some board members.
Go ahead. Ms. West, thank you.
Yes. All right. Board members, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize that Dr. Richardson is with us now.
Yes, sorry, something came up at work.
Yes, ma'am, we understand. Thank you for joining us. Yes, ma'am. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Jefferson County International Baccalaureate School and Jefferson County School System and State Board District 4 as a 2023 Blue Ribbon School. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have folks from-- Yes, please stand. Thank you for being here. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Ms. Thorington. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Cordova Elementary School and Walker County School System and State School Board District 7 as a 2023 Blue Ribbon School. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion, there's a motion and a second. Do we have representatives from Cordova Elementary? Welcome. Outstanding. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you and congratulations. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Mount Carmel Elementary School in Madison County School System and State School Board District 8 as a 2023 Blue Ribbon School.
I do make that motion and acknowledge we have representatives from this school district and school here. Ms. West?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. Please stand, those of you from Mount Carmel and Madison County. Welcome from Madison County and congratulations. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, Ms. Thorington. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Skyline High School in the Jackson County School System, State School Board District 8 as a 2023 Blue Ribbon School. May I have a motion to adopt?
I so moved, and I would acknowledge that representatives are from that school system, and our distinguished senator from that area is also here with us. Thank you very much for coming.
And I second.
Ms. Thorington, did you get Ms. Ziegler's second? She's second in the motion? Yes. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you so much. We'll now consider a resolution honoring the 2023 A-plus college-ready schools of excellence. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Mackey?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make some comments on this. So you see, there's going to be this recognition for our schools of excellence, and then the next one is a smaller list for our schools of distinction. A lot of those folks are with us. I'll let you recognize them, maybe all together. I know that at the end, again, I want to get one picture with all of the schools down front, so we'll organize that. That'll be our first picture. Each of you, by the way, our schools of excellence and schools of distinction, will get your own resolution. We're adopting them as one resolution as a bunch, but each of you will get an individual personalized one. I'm going to give those to Mr. Dixon, Mark Dixon, and he's going to get them to you in order after the meeting. But these are our schools that have shown exceptional involvement and growth in advanced placement. Not only are they offering advanced placement courses, but they are showing that their students are doing well in advanced placement, and they are, they're exceeding, by the way. They're just exceeding the standards. They're doing excellent work, and they are growing the number of both courses offered and students making a three or better on the exam. So we're very proud of this. We have thousands of students across the state who are graduating high school with college credits through advanced placement courses because of this work. It's been a longtime partnership between this board and A-plus Education Partnership, and we thank them that we continue to grow it. And with a couple of legislators here, I know Representative DeBeau, Senator Livingston are here. Let us recognize you too, because we do this partnership with money. The legislature grants us every year, and we've been able to continue to grow that each year, and we thank you for that support. It's, this is all good work for students. So congratulations to all of our schools of excellence and our schools of distinction today.
Any further discussion from the board? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, Ms. Thorington. We will now consider a resolution honoring the 2023 A-plus college-ready schools of distinction. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Let's see. Item H. We will now consider a resolution in recognition of inclusion in Alabama schools, December 2nd, 2023. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please-- Yes, ma'am. Did you have something? Dr. Mackey?
Well, yes, ma'am. I'd just like to recognize, just so folks understand what this is. So we recognize our inclusion week in December every year. This is to recognize the work of our special education teachers and what they do to make sure that all students, no matter their disability, are included in the regular school program. We think that's extremely important, that we offer high-quality opportunities for all students, including students that are most vulnerable and some of the, of course, who have severe disabilities, and they require a lot of extra services. But we believe it's important to include them in the regular school and just for the benefit of the public. I want everybody to understand the significance of this resolution. We spend a whole week in December honoring our special educators and the work that they do with these students.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Any other board members care to comment? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item I. We will now consider a resolution to approve a Class AA school psychology P-12 program at the University of Alabama at Birmingham. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item J. We will now consider a resolution for revision of the 2022 Career and Technical Education State Course of Study, Career Cluster in Finance. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Mackey, would you like to say anything about that?
Excuse me. Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. So these are, we are, we feel like we are always revising courses of study around the department. For those who don't know, that we have 16 education clusters in Career Tech. We used to, and I say used to, and the last time they were done, we did all 16 in one year, and then they were not updated for more than a decade. And five years ago, we decided that what we wanted to do was break them apart, that every year we would revisit some of the Career Tech clusters so that they were constantly being refreshed. They were never old. And also, it kept our staff from aging prematurely by trying to do 16 in one year. So we have some today for the board to approve. You'll also, if those of you who stayed for the work session will see, that we'll now start considering textbooks for these after the board approves them, assuming the board does. And then we are actually, today in the work session, they'll be presenting three or four, I think, four more clusters that we've just completed work on this year, and so they'll begin the process on new ones, too. So this is constant work going on to make sure that our students have the most accurate and up-to-date courses of study. And of course, these are in particular Career Tech fields. I won't go into those unless anybody has a question.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All of those, please, in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item K. We will now consider a resolution for the revision of the 2022 Career and Tech Educational State Course of Study and Work-Based Learning. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to point out that you've already mentioned that we will discuss some changes in the course of study during our work session. We're not approving this without also having discussed this in a work session and having it presented to us in a timely manner so that we could actually read it and review it before that work session.
Yes, ma'am. And to the point, too, if any of you thought Mrs. West read out 2022, does she have the wrong year? No, these are actually standards that were approved last year, but the committee has already come back because finance and workforce are changing rapidly, and they have made additional recommendations. So these are actually updates to ones that were adopted by the board a year ago. And then, as Mrs. Bell said, in the work session, we'll be looking at the work from the 2023 committee for consideration for approval at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. Item L. We'll now consider a motion to adopt the Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-3-3 -dot-six-zero pertaining to the Alternative Teacher Preparation Organizations. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
May I please just address, thank you for our speaker who came today. So this is an issue we're working on. We're going to work through it very quickly. So we have three private organizations that are interested in offering alternate teacher pathways for the state. The legislature, Representative DeBeau, sponsored this bill and shepherded it through the House, and then it, I can't remember who the upstairs sponsor was, but through the Senate. So these organizations are ready to start. The question that came up this morning, we have discussed in the work session, and that's about using an alternate test other than the Praxis. One of the, one of the companies does use their own test in other states rather than using the state test, and so we're working on that. The law says that they can use their own, but it has to be, you have to prove or you have to show that it's basically equal and it's aligned to Alabama's standards. As I think we're in complete agreement, because we don't want to do that in-house. And the speaker this morning said they'd like for a third party to do that. We agree that we need a third party to do that. We have been in deep discussions with regulatory agencies here about how to go about contracting that, and it appears that we've been told we're going to have to-- well, no, it appears, we have been told, we're going to have to RFP that and find a third-party vendor that's willing to do it. So that will take some time. Doesn't mean they can't go ahead and start, but initially, their candidates would have to take the Praxis until that process is done. There's nothing I can do to control that. But I do want you to know we're going to expedite that RFP so that we can get their tests reviewed as quickly as possible so they can move on with that. The other two vendors don't have their own test and intend to use the Praxis, and they, they're both, they're all three anxious to get started. So with this adoption, then we will move on where they can begin offering alternate certification for private, from private vendors. The other thing about this is for people to know, they do have to have a college degree, obviously. So these are, these are folks who already have a college degree. Let's say they have a degree in, I mean, the most simple one, say, they have a history degree, and now they want to teach high school history, but they don't have a teaching certificate. So they, they can go either back to college, take four additional courses and pass the history Praxis, or they can go through one of these alternate companies and take their coursework. A lot of them, you may say, well, why would they do that? Well, a lot of times, it's, they make it easy because it's online. They have different delivery models, and then they can pass, again, pass the Praxis or the third-party test and get their certificate. So we'll honor both of those certificates, subject to the rule being adopted. And I can answer any questions on it, but we have had, for anybody who wonders if, again, as Mrs. Bell and Mrs. West have both alluded this morning, is the board just adopting this stuff? We have had, I would say, hours of discussion around this rule before it comes before the body for a vote.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you name a few states that already do this? I know there has been mention and meetings at the national level, and can you give us some examples?
Yes, ma'am. No, not off ahead, but there are a lot of them. I just can't name any in particular. But they are in work in a lot of states. Well, one is Texas. In fact, Texas has more, they have more teachers certified through these alternate methods than they do through their colleges of education now. They've been doing it for, I think, more than a decade. I think probably half the states in the southeast do it, but I'd be remiss to try to just name them. But Texas is one I know, and I've talked with their education agency and folks out there about the way they do it.
And I have a follow-up question. Knowing that you would probably say Texas, they have actually had to close some of the schools or at least put them on notice. And what process is a part of what we would be approving today in Alabama?
That is a good, good question. So they did, in Texas, one of the vendors, I'll make it clear, not one that spoke this morning, they did get suspended for a time period because there was, there were allegations that they were not properly supporting their students. And basically, when their students got to the end of the program, they were not passing at a very high rate. The rule that you're putting in place, the legislature authorized-- The rule that you're putting in place, the Legislature authorizes, but then the, we can't do anything with that until the board gives us rules. So the rule you're putting in place says that they have to go through a full evaluation by our teacher certification section. And so, just like our Colleges of Ed, if they don't perform, they can, they can be, you know, they can go through a conditional approval, or they could actually have their approval to, to recommend, they don't issue certificates, they recommend people for certification, and they could have their ability to recommend people for certification pulled, subject to the rules today. So, there is an oversight mechanism. It's not like they'll just be able to do whatever. Yes.
Thank you. I asked the question pretty much knowing the answer.
Yeah, I assumed.
Ms. West, if I may make one comment.
Chair recognizes Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you very much. Dr. Mackey, as we know, all the teacher education programs in Alabama are subject to review on a regular basis. Are these programs, you said they'll be subject to review, is there a specific scheme or timeline or plan where they come up for automatic renewal or review?
Dr. Reynolds, I can't remember if the timeline's been established or not, we'll have to, but those will be, well, so there'll be an application process, and then we'll come back to you with those, but I don't know that there's a specific timeline. Normally, our other, our Colleges of Ed are normally on a seven-year review cycle, but I don't know that we've established a review cycle for this.
Well, I would hope when we promulgate those rules, that we certainly do not treat these people any differently than we do our Colleges of Ed. That would certainly not be fair or equitable. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
Ms. West, I was about to ask, in line with that, the standards that the Colleges of Education have to meet for review, will those be the same standards that these groups will have to meet? Is it still to be worked out or determined?
No, so what, so what you've got in the rule is that they have to be essentially equitable to our Colleges of Ed.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because there are specific standards that tie into that.
There is, and it, it is a little, there's a, there's a caveat, because as you all may remember, we, we actually adopted rules to do this last year, and then there was new legislation, and so we've, we're essentially, today what you're doing is amending the rule you adopted. So you already allowed it before the Legislature acted, but then Legislature acted and it, it made a little conflict in just, actually just one part of our rule. And so we're just amending the rule to make it in line with the legislation now.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you, Ms. Thorington. We will now consider a motion to adopt the Alabama Administrative Code, Chapter 290-3-6 pertaining to charter schools. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Seeing none. We'll move on to item eight. Dr. Mackey, do you have any public or legal information to share?
There is none today.
Thank you. Dr. Mackey, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes, ma'am, I do have a superintendent's report, and I thank you for the time. I have several items today, but I'll try to move through them quickly, because the last thing we have is the most important, recognizing some of our students. But I, I do want to bring recognition today to some folks. There, there are two people yesterday that I got to spend a little time with yesterday afternoon, who are not here at the board meeting, but they're, because they're, they work here at the department, but they're not typically here, because they're working to make sure that the work we do happens and moves on. And where I'm going is yesterday, we were recognized by the state auditor for perfect audit on all of our possessions. So we have eleven million dollars' worth of furniture and copiers and such in this building, and Auditor Shirel came over to, to recognize our folks with a special certificate, because we had not one missing item, not a calculator, or a tape dispenser, or anything in a year-long, or two-year-long audit, and I think that's significant. He told me, he said, he said, "Dr. Mackey, I have agencies that only have eleven, a hundred and eleven items on their list, and they have three missing." And you have eleven million dollars' worth of equipment, literally thousands of items on the list, and not one missing. And so I want to recognize our facilities folks for taking care of that and having a perfect audit. And I should have had them all here today. I may bring them into the work session. I actually was gonna announce this in the work session, but I thought, wow, with all this crowd here, I'd like to do that more publicly. But Cindy Gillespie leads that work for us, and she has a great team with her, and they really do take it very seriously. And even board members, I know some of you've gotten calls about if, if we've given you a laptop or anything, where is it, and we want to scan it, and we want to make sure that we know where it is at all times. I appreciate they take that seriously, and appreciate the auditor for coming over to recognize them. Our schools of excellence and distinction, I just want to take a moment and ask all those folks to please stand, so we can see how many there are. There are a lot of them. Don't leave us. Remember, we're gonna do a photo at the end, but I do point out too, I should have done this earlier, our schools of excellence are all high schools, our schools of distinction are middle schools, building the pipeline toward those, that high school recognition. Can I read the list? I can. Let me go back to get the list, pull it up, one second. I would be glad to. So our schools of excellence are, from Alexander City School System, Benjamin Russell High School, from Clay County School System, Central High School of Clay County, from the DeKalb County High School, Plainview High School, from the Elmore County High School, or, School System, Wetonka High School, from the Jasper City School System, Jasper Junior High School, from the Mobile County School System, Denton Magnet School of Technology, from Orange Beach City School System, Orange Beach High School, from the Trussville City School System, Hewitt-Trussville High School, from the Walker County High, uh, School System, Parrish Junior High School, and from the Winston County School System, Winston County High School. And then the other list, I think I already had it up, there are only four of them, but I may have to go back. Yeah, from the Geneva City School System, Geneva High School, from Orange Beach City School System, Orange Beach Middle School, from Scottsboro City School System, Scottsboro Junior High School, and from the Trussville City System, Hewitt-Trussville Middle School. So those are our schools of excellence and the schools of distinction. Thank you for reminding us. As everyone in this room knows, and everyone on this dais knows, service on a school board can be difficult service. I've never known anybody who ran for the school boards so they could get rich. It is not a get-rich-quick scheme, but we have the Alabama Association of School Boards, Sally Smith, the executive director's with us, and they have several local school board members who are in town for a couple of days. The board was with them last night for dinner and a question-and-answer panel. So I'd like to ask all of our local school board members if they'd stand and be recognized today, who are with us from across the state. As more than one of our state board members alluded to last night, we know the issues you deal with, because when you tell people no, they get appealed here. So we, and, and as multiple board members said, we send them back to you, because we do want, we do believe in local governance, and we know how important it is that local people stand up, be willing to serve on a school board, and it's not easy work. We have several superintendents who are here with, with both schools being recognized and with their boards today, and appreciate them too. I want to now go back to Veterans Day, if I can. So first of all, we've, a mistake this morning, but it is my mistake. We were, until this morning, I thought, we had a little switch, nobody's fault, but it was gonna be Prattville High School, Mrs. West, we gave you a script with Prattville High School, but those students are actually from Stanhope Elmore School in Elmore County. So I wanted you to know, students, that was not Mrs. West's fault.
I'm so sorry.
We gave her the wrong script. But we do have these students still with us this morning, and one of them is gonna come down and speak to us about Veterans Day and the importance of it, and then we're gonna close out with a special presentation by Mr. William Jones, who works here at the department in our Special Programs and Innovations Section. But first, I would like to invite to the stage Juliana Peralta, and she is, she's close here, and while she comes up, let me recognize the others, if they'd stand in the back, so from, again, my apologies, that is all on me, but from Stanhope Elmore High School in Elmore County, we have Battalion, Battalion Executive Officer Cadet Major Alex Kayler, and he is accompanying Juliana Peralta to this, to this event, who's down here. The colored guard cadets are Elizabeth Hicks, carrying the American flag, she's the colored guard commander. Devane, Devane, I'm sorry, Danavia Timmons, carrying the, Danavia Timmons, carrying the Alabama state flag, Ashley Trejo, the rifle bearer, and Soshi Luna, the rifle bearer, and then the backup colored guard member is also Riley Harbin with us. Their instructors are JROTC instructors, we appreciate so much, are both retired from the United States Army, Senior Army Instructor Colonel Charles Bonacero, and Army Instructor First Sergeant James Chambers, and I think First Sergeant Chambers is, is with us today in the back. So a big thank you to all of our cadets, and I turn it over to you, Ms. Peralta.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Alabama State Board of Education. I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today on a topic that holds immense, immense significance in our nation's history, Veterans Day. Veterans Day is not merely a day off from school or work, it is a day that should remind us of the profound meaning and significance that it carries. Veterans Day, originally known as Armistice Day, was established on November 11, 1919, to commemorate the end of World War I, the end, the war to end all wars. It was a day to honor and pay tribute to the brave men and women who had served in that conflict. Over time, the significance of this day has evolved to honor all veterans. It is a day to recognize and celebrate the service, sacrifice, and valor of our military members who have served in peacetime during wars at home and abroad. The significance of Veterans Day lies in the profound impact veterans have had on our nation's history and freedoms we enjoy. Our veterans have defended our country against external threats, safeguarding our liberties and ways of life. They have sacrificed time with their families, faced the harsh realities of war, and many have given the ultimate sacrifice, their lives, for the cause of, for the cause of freedom and peace. These individuals have displayed unwavering courage, resilience, and a commitment to a cause greater than themselves. The significance of Veterans Day goes beyond a simple commemoration of the past. It is a reminder of the ongoing commitment we must have to our veterans and their wellbeings. Veterans Day is not just another holiday, it is a day that symbolizes the best of our nation. It is a day to express our deep gratitude to those who have served and continue to serve, a day to remember the sacrifices they have made, and a day to educate the next generation about the importance of our history and the values that make our country great. Let us remember that the Veterans Day, let us remember that the significance of Veterans Day lies in the embodiment of honor, duty, and sacrifice, and let us strive to honor our veterans, not only on this day, but every day. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you so much. Students, please accept my deepest apology. I so enjoyed meeting each one of you, and I do apologize, I'm so proud to have you here today, and thank you for your commitment. As you were telling me about your plans for the future, it's just inspiring to know that you want to serve. So we thank you and appreciate you for taking time today to be with us.
And they're from District Three.
They are. Mr. Jones, if I may, Ms. West, again, William Jones, many of you know Mr. Jones, he, he always provides, he's, he's gonna present a musical presentation, but many of you are gonna recognize him, because if you ever go to the Super Seven, and I know we've got some teams here who've been in the Super Seven, then he always, I'm not gonna say entertains, he touches our hearts through song at the Super Seven. Mr. Jones, I want to turn it over to you, and, and after this, Ms. West, I'll turn the program back over to you.
Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of gray. For purple mountain majesties above the fruited plains. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, God bless America, my home sweet home, America, America. God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining
Wow.
Dr. Mackey, thank you.
Anything else, Dr. Mackey?
There is nothing else, except that I realize now, we actually did not ask all the veterans in the audience to please stand and be recognized. So all of our veterans, if you would stand. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, and I'd like to thank the, take this opportunity to thank Mr. Choke Markham, our chief of staff, for working so hard to make sure that this program today was special for all of us, and to include students, and that's why we're here today, that's why we do what we do every day, is for our children. So it was really wonderful to have them here today, and I thank Mr. Markham for his hard work. The next meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will be held on Thursday, December 14th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. in the 14th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. in the Gordon Persons Building. They have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, please raise your hands. We are adjourned.